Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the July 19 Planning Commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Samu.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Chair Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Here.
Commissioner Mishra will not be here tonight, and Commissioner Marshall should be on his way.
Very good. Thank you. And I'd like to lead you all in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item of business is approval of the minutes for the May 17 meeting.
Motion that we approve the minutes for May 17?
To the second?
Second.
Okay. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And Agenda Item 2, Communications Staff, do we have communications staff?
Yeah, a couple items. First, I'd like to welcome Councilmember Salazar to the audience. He is serving as your council liaison this year, so he's here for -- there's actually a pretty full agenda of different types of Planning Commission items, so it's actually a good night for you to be here and get a taste of what goes on at the Planning Commission, so welcome. Feel free to ask any questions if you have any throughout the meeting. The second is our normal announcement that this whole packet is online at sanbruno.ca.gov. In the planning section, if you go there, you can get the agenda, get the staff report, get the minutes, everything's there, and follow along with the meeting.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite Councilperson Salazar to address us if you have any comments now, or otherwise you can listen to us try to handle our business.
We've got a pretty full agenda, so I'll let you get on.
Thank you very much. Public -- Agenda Item 3 is public comments on items not on the agenda. This is the opportunity for any members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items that are not agendized tonight. And hearing none, I'll move on to Item Number 4, Announcement of Conflict of Interest. Are any of the members having a conflict of interest on any business items tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to Agenda Item --
Through the chair?
Excuse me?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall, he should be here on his way, for the item, and I know this from the -- when this item was at the architectural review level, he does have a conflict at 560 San Mateo Avenue as Marshall Realty handled the leasing of this space, so he will refuse himself from this item.
Very good. Thank you very much. Agenda Item 5A is 1716 Canes Avenue, which is a request for a use permit in construction -- for construction of an addition which increases the gross floor area of the existing home by greater than 50 percent, and to allow an addition to exceed 1,825 square feet of living space with a one-car garage per sections 12-230B1 and 12-230B5 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. The item before you is a request for a use permit for a second-story and first-story addition to an existing, single-story residential home. As indicated by the chair, there's two items before you as far as the use permit. One is the expansion is greater than 50 percent, and the other item is with the expansion, the home will be over 1,825 square feet with a single-car garage, so that does also require the use permit. The applicant is proposing to construct an 865-square-foot first and second-story addition to the existing residence. The addition will be located to the rear of the home and would accommodate a new stairway, reconfigured lower floor, and then a new master bedroom and bathroom on the second story. The existing home is 1,406 square feet in area, and with the 865-square-foot addition, the total home would be 2,271 square feet in area, and that does include the 253-square-foot single-car garage. The proposed addition is set back approximately seven -- a little over seven feet from the left side and 20 feet from the right side property line. As I indicated in the staff report, during the courtesy notice period prior to the ARC review, we did receive a call from one of the neighbors. That neighbor expressed some concern with the second-story addition. I tried to, you know, meet with the neighbor, see if there's anything we can do to mitigate any of the concerns they had, and I think the concern was really just having a new second story to the home. They're used to having a single story there. But based on the site inspection and when you reviewed the plans, you'll see that the addition is set well from that residence. It's over 20 feet away, so I don't see any real significant impact to that neighbor. I'm going to have the applicant describe the green building measures they plan to incorporate, and the colors and materials for the addition will match the existing residence. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any commission questions for staff? Thank you very much. And if the applicant would step to the podium, if you wish to make any comments on your application, please go right ahead.
The only thing I would like to address tonight, Commissioner, is the eco-friendly initiatives that we're incorporating in the building and house. We are using prefab forms for the foundation. We're engineered lumber and metal studs will be used for the framing, so we're no -- you know, trying to keep the minimum down on the cutting new wood. I'm a conservation at heart, as I mentioned before in our last discussion, so anywhere where we can save is always good for me. In fact, we also incorporated in the last discussion the conduit build to incorporate solar eventually after the build, so those are some of the primary ones that we're focusing on. We do currently have energy-saving lighting inside the house, and we're going to plan to use that throughout the house as we add the second floor on.
Thank you. And just before you step forward, I forgot to ask you to state your name and street address.
Hi, I'm Mark Walker, Mark P. Walker, and my address is 1716 Canes Avenue.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Are there any commission questions for the applicant? Hearing none, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll see if there's anyone from the general public who would like to comment on this application. Okay, hearing none, and without objection, I'll bring the matter back to the commission for consideration.
Through the chair?
Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
If there are no comments, I would be happy to make a motion.
Please go ahead.
I move that the Planning Commission approve Use Permit 11-005 based on the findings of Facts 1 through 7 and subject to condition of approval 1 through 23.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Commissioner Biassadi. Okay, any discussion on the question? Hearing none, we'll go ahead. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and there's a 10-day appeal period. Moving on to 5B, which is 2321 Oakmont Drive, a request for a use permit to allow the construction of an addition which exceeds the 44 percent lot coverage per sections 12-240B3 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report.
Thank you, and good evening. As stated, the applicant has applied for a use permit to construct an addition that would exceed the 44 percent lot coverage requirement. The site is located on the west side of Oakmont Drive between Marion Drive and Berkshire Drive and is currently developed with a one-story, single-family dwelling. That single-family dwelling consists of 1,840 square feet of living area and has a two-car attached garage. The applicant is proposing to construct a 562-square-foot, one-story addition. The project specifically calls for the remodel of the first-floor plan, which would expand the three existing bedrooms onsite. Additionally, a new office and bedroom are also proposed. As a result, the addition would result in 2,402 square feet of living area. The project was heard at the June 2011 Architectural Review Committee meeting. At that meeting, the Architectural Review Committee forwarded the project onto the Planning Commission with staff recommendations regarding overall landscaping and the onsite impervious surfaces. Since that time, the applicant has incorporated additional landscaping onsite and has reduced the overall amount of impervious surfaces on the site to be less than the 80 percent which is permitted by the municipal code. In regards to the entitlement request to exceed the 44 percent lot coverage requirement, staff does find that there is a significant amount of open space still on the lot. Specifically, the front yard setback would vary between 16 feet and 22 feet, and the rear yard setback would be between 10 feet and 17 feet. As stated, the applicant also will be incorporating landscaping in the front yard, side yard, and rear yard as well. Regarding performance with the residential design guidelines, we do find that it is consistent with the residential design guidelines. The proposed roofline will match the existing rooflines, and all proposed exterior materials will match the existing home. Specifically, they'll utilize vertical wood siding for the front elevation and stucco finish for the sides and rear. Staff did send a courtesy notice to the immediately adjacent property owners and the required 300-foot notice to all property owners, and we did not receive any comments from concerned neighbors. Overall, staff is in support of this project and would recommend that the Planning Commission approve the use permit request subject to findings of fact 1 through 7 and conditions of approval 1 through 23. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any commission questions for staff? I have one. On page 3, there's a table about site conditions that indicates the existing and proposed conditions are one space for covered parking, but on the drawings, it appears there are two.
Correct, that would be a typo. There's two existing covered parking spaces, and they will remain as a result of this project.
So that'd be two typos under existing and proposed.
Correct, correct.
Very good. Thank you. Any -- no commission questions under staff? Thank you very much. I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and make any comments you might like to in support of your application. Please give your name and street name for the record.
Hi, my name is Bess Cipriano, and I am the applicant for Mr. Fernandez's residential house. In regards to landscape work that would be now a part of the major renovation of the improvement of the project, the green building measures implementation, we will be -- I would be recommending to the owner drought-resistant soils by using more of mulch on the lawn and drought--
Excuse me, I missed that. What did it say? Drought-resistant soils with what?
Soils with the application of mulch, garden mulch, soil mulch.
Okay, thank you.
And drought-tolerant plants such as California native plants or Mediterranean plants. So at least I will be -- be -- green building measures implementation would be observed. That's it.
Thank you. Are there -- please wait for one moment. Are there any commission questions for the applicant?
Through the chair?
Commissioner Johnson.
Just looking at the conditions of approval, do you agree with all the conditions of approval? You don't have any questions or comments on those?
Yes, I do.
You're in agreement with them?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public here with some questions on this application? Okay, hearing none, and without objection, I'll close the public hearing, bring the matter back to the commission for consideration.
If nobody's got any questions or any concerns, I'll make a motion that we approve Use Permit 11-006 based on findings of fact 1 through 7, subject to conditions of approval 1 through 23.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Johnson. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and there's a 10-day appeal period. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 5C, that's 699 San Mateo Avenue, a request for a use permit to allow alcoholic beverage sales in conjunction with a restaurant per Chapter 1284-210 and 1296-120C12 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Thank you. As stated, the applicant has applied for a use permit to allow alcohol sales in conjunction with an existing restaurant located at 699 San Mateo Avenue. The La Paloma Restaurant is located on the corner of San Mateo Avenue and Canes Avenue in downtown San Bruno and is part of a larger 5,000-square parcel. The existing hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. They serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner onsite. There are a total of 46 seats onsite. The applicant has applied for a use permit to essentially reestablish alcohol sales at the subject site. One thing that's important to note is that the La Paloma Restaurant was operating with a Type 40 liquor license from 1991 to 2009. That Type 40 liquor license allowed the sale of beer in conjunction with the existing restaurant. One thing I would like to point out is prior to 2003, a conditional use permit was not required for the sale of alcohol in conjunction with the restaurant. These uses were allowed by right and are considered legal nonconforming uses, and those legal nonconforming restaurants are subject to performance standards within the municipal code. In this particular case, the ABC license was never properly transferred to the new business operator, and as a result, their ABC license expired in 2009. Nonconforming uses are allowed to be to continue as long as they're reestablished within that six-month time period. In this particular case, the business operator did not reapply for an ABC license between -- in that six-month time period. Therefore, they are subject to today's standards, which require a conditional use permit for all new restaurants wanting to serve alcohol. With that stated, staff does not anticipate any negative effects in conjunction with alcohol sales with the existing restaurant. The hours of operation will remain the same, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Additionally, the police department has reviewed the project and has placed the standard conditions of approval on the project. Staff would recommend that the Planning Commission approve this project, subject to findings of fact 1 through 5 and conditions of approval 1 through 14. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions by the commission for staff?
Through the chair?
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes. Over the past year or two, have there been any comments or complaints or issues with this establishment?
No, the police department did review the application. They have not been called out to this specific site in the past few years.
Hours of operation will remain the same?
Yes, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week.
Capacity and all of those, so it's just strictly an alcohol?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, a point of order, I just want to check and make sure I understand this. You said verbally findings of fact 1 through 5, but it actually is 7 according to the report.
1 through 5 is correct. 7 would be a typo within the report.
Well, I see it's--
It's 5A and B.
Oh.
So there's two within five.
I'm on the wrong report. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me. Thank you very much. I'd like to open the public hearing and ask the applicant to please come forward. Is the applicant here for 699? Okay. And please make any presentation you wish, and let us know your name and street address.
I'm representing Mr. Castellanos. My name is Jose Raffres, and I'm with my great friend here, Sergio Castellanos, on the address of 699 San Mateo Avenue. And thank you for giving us the time being here. And basically, like Matt says, it was simple that we should apply here for the beer license. You know, I know my great friend, he's on and managing and operating the business for about 13 years, and we went through this process for the last past two years, you know, through ups and downs in the business, but that's basically it, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we would just like to, you know, have the -- your permission and the license back again on the premises.
Very good. Any questions by the commission for the applicant? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here from the general public who would like to comment on this application? Hearing no one, and without objection, I'll bring the matter back to the commission for consideration.
I guess I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Chase.
One thing through the chair?
Let's see. One moment.
Sorry. I'd just like to also thank the applicant for going through this. I know it was somewhat of a tedious process, and he did -- it was a situation where his license lapsed, but it's not a reflection. We appreciate your business, being downtown, being there for a long time.
Having said that--
Go ahead, Commissioner Chase.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve Use Permit 11-001 based on findings of fact 1 through 5 and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 14.
And is there a second? Second. Commissioner Biassadi has a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'm not clear, is there a 10-day appeal period on this?
Yes.
There is, okay. 10-day appeal period. Now moving on to Agenda Item 5D, 56D, San Mateo Avenue, which is a request for a use permit to operate a coin-operated laundry facility for Chapter 1296-120C3 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Thank you, and good evening. The subject site is located on the east side of San Mateo Avenue. It's 2,500 square feet. You're probably familiar with it. It was previously occupied by Lullaby Lane and is immediately adjacent to the public walkway that goes from San Mateo Avenue into the parking lot in the back. The applicant is proposing a coin-operated laundry business at that location, and that is a conditional use in the central business district zoning. The applicant has also applied for an architectural review permit and facade improvement funding, and those things were heard just last Thursday, July 14, before the Architectural Review Committee. The architectural review permit was approved, and the facade improvement funding was approved as well. The plans and the color rendering from that architectural review permit were included in your packet, although it's a separate entitlement. It does play into our analysis and thought about the project, so you have the color in front of you for your review as we're discussing here tonight. I also like to point out that the improvements that were approved as part of the architectural review permit would be required to be completed before business operation. So the conditional use permit before you tonight does have a condition of approval that says all improvements from the architectural review permit would have to be completed prior to operation. So in a little bit more detail now, the applicant is proposing a full-service laundry business, so that includes coin-operated washers and dryers. And these are described to staff and in the statement as being sort of modern and up-to-date equipment, and so they are more water-efficient, they are more energy-efficient, and as I understand it, also complete the washing and drying cycles more quickly. So hopefully gone are the days of standing at the laundromat for many, many hours, but as we know, many members of our community do rely on the coin-operated laundry to meet their basic needs. They also propose to have a wash-and-fold service as well as a dry cleaning pick-up and drop-off, and the cleaning itself would be done at another site. Their proposed business hours are fairly long, at 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days per week. They have also said that they would always have an employee onsite to provide service and maintain kind of safety and security in a presence in the storefront. They've also proposed cameras at the entrances to increase security and reduce vandalism. As the commission has discussed in the past, we've talked about security cameras in locations that may not have enough lighting to make sure that the cameras are picking up everything that they're intended to see. We talked about that at the St. Vincent de Paul application. So we have revised our condition language that we use for security cameras to say that if the lighting is not sufficient for the cameras to work, then the lighting would also have to be improved for the cameras to function properly. For those of you that were at the Architectural Review Committee meeting, we did discuss and add a little bit of additional exterior lighting on the project. So staff is confident at this time that the lighting will be sufficient and ensure a good, high level of safety considering those hours that go into the evening. Staff sent a courtesy notice on June 29, as well as a legal notice on July 8. We have not received any comments as of tonight. Staff does support the project for several reasons. So to summarize, the project includes modern equipment that saves water and energy, includes on-demand hot water system, and so this is really the latest technology that's available for this type of business. They're including dramatic improvements to the site, including a new storefront, so the actual window storefront system is proposed and approved to be replaced, a new sign. They've also included sort of, I would describe it as a whimsical mural feature across the front elevation that really reinforces that use of a laundromat, but I think also could be described as family-friendly and attractive to children as they're in the area. They're also proposing what is really a significant investment in a building that's remained essentially unchanged for decades. And finally, it is a needed service. People need a place to do their laundry, and this business would be new and up-to-date and would have a high-quality appearance. So therefore, staff does recommend approval of Use Permit 11-010 based on findings of fact 1 to 3 and subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any commission questions for the staff?
Through the chair?
Commissioner Biassadi?
No.
Commissioner Chase.
No, go ahead, Rick.
At Architectural Review, we discussed some seating and the rear improvements to the rear of the property, basically, the seating area and the ADA ramp. I don't see anything on the drawings. Has any discussion or anything been done with--
No, not yet. And that's because of the timing and the turnaround. So to update the rest of the commission, there was quite a bit of discussion at Architectural Review. The applicant has expressed an interest in having some seating opportunities in the back of the building. There are some empty, I always call it empty space, there's an old ramp or two old ramps that are there now. The ramp will have to be compliant with ADA requirements, but they would like to use that rear area as some benefit to their customers. There's not enough room for parking, and there's not been formal parking at that location. And so we discussed having some benches and seating, kind of a pleasant area for that. And so staff's intention, based on the comments from the Architectural Review Committee, was to have our -- the architect work with staff to come up with a design, review that for ADA compliance, but then also help the applicant implement some best practices that would be very comfortable and friendly for their customers, but not necessarily untract -- attract an undue number of folks that may just be hanging out in the neighborhood but not customers. So staff is familiar with some best practices for that and will work with the applicant.
Very good, thank you.
And Commissioner Chase.
Yeah, Commissioner Biassadi, kind of asked my question. I'm just going to take it a little bit further, just so I'm clear. When you're talking about the rear and the ramp, we're specifically talking about the back of the building and the area that they want to use that isn't properly being used right now, is that the adjacent area outside of the actual building itself?
Yes, it is outside the building in the photograph. You can see that there is an old concrete ramp.
Right.
So the ramp would be reconfigured, and then that could be used as something productive for their customers. It is visible from the public parking lot behind it.
Right, that's, you know, I guess you guys hashed it over at ARC, but I know my concern, and I'll just voice it now, would be anything that's going to be too nice in the back there, and don't get me wrong, but benches or anything like that, it could possibly end up attracting just, you know, non-customers like you're stating and/or maybe undesirable non-customers, I guess would be the PC way of putting it, I don't know. And how would that lighting and safety affect the patrons and the staff that's going to be working there? Is that rear entrance going to be opened up the whole entire time of business until 11 a.m. until 11 p.m.?
Well, I think the applicant can speak to some of the details. What I would add from a staff point of view is we talked about at Architectural Review Committee, changing to more of a glass storefront-style door, so the employees would have some visibility to the outside. I think from an operational point of view, they would probably want to consider when they make seating available in the back. You probably don't want to have seating until 11 o'clock at night, a good portion of the year. So I think they would -- we would help them come up with a plan for that rear area that would provide them some flexibility, but I think also safety. There would be exterior lighting in the back as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commission questions for the applicant -- for the staff? Okay, thank you very much for your report. Now I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and make any presentation you wish. Perhaps you, if you can keep those questions in mind, you might even address those in your comments. Give your name and street address.
My name is Shirazifat, and I'm requesting for a conditional use permit on 560 San Mateo Avenue. If you have any question, also my architect is here, he can help you with that.
Okay.
Yeah, through the chair.
Commissioner Chase.
A couple questions. Number one, as I just stated, you know, the -- that rear area, you know, my concern is the safety of patrons that are going to be there and staff.
Right.
And if it's going to be, you know, is the rear door going to be open for, you know, the whole entire time the business is open? Or do you possibly plan on closing, you know, just having the front entrance, say like after, I don't know, 10 o'clock or 9:30 or--
Well, it's going to be between 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Right.
But we'll consider it as the business, we start the business, we'll figure out what is the best way to do it.
Okay. And then that leads me kind of to my next question. 11 o'clock does kind of seem somewhat late to me. I don't know the standard business practice for laundromats. I suppose some are open from 6 till 10. But is 11 o'clock-- But is 11 o'clock, is it really necessary?
I mean, we can change it to 10 o'clock. It's not a problem with us. It's just that this is what we had planned earlier, but we're pretty much flexible.
And the reason, the only reason I'm asking about the hours of operation again is a safety issue. I mean, I don't know how many other businesses on that particular area of the street are open that late, and, you know, just kind of, just naturally, I just get a little worried.
To be honest with you, I haven't been there late at night. I can't answer that question, how safe it is or not. But we're going to have a camera, and we're going to have a couple of attendants. And based on that, we'll make a decision whether to open until 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock.
So if I can ask a question, staff, if we, if it does get approved with the business hours that are being proposed, the owner could always cut back the hours?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, these are pretty much the maximum hours without additional approval.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Having managed a laundromat, I'd like to compliment you on your design. I think it looks great.
I thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on the application? Okay. I'll close the public hearing, move the matter back to the commission for discussion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson?
I did serve on the Architectural Review Committee, and for just information for my colleagues here, commissioners, I really felt that the committee really thoroughly explored all the details of the safety, the details of lighting, all the specifics. There was a lot of compliance on the applicant's part. And as far as the hours, I feel that having it to 11 o'clock is not unreasonable, recognizing that it's not uncommon for families by the time they put down their children and just go on with their day-to-day, it's, you know, by the time you get to a laundromat, it is 9 o'clock. By the time you get all, everything done. So 11 o'clock is not unreasonable. However, I certainly would like to leave it in the department's hands that if something should come up, that they would have the direction to make those decisions on adjusting those hours should they need to do that.
Any other commission comments, or the chair is open for motion?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase?
Okay. Well, then I will make a motion that we approve Use Permit 11-010, based on findings of fact 1 through 3, conditions of approval 1 through 22, to incorporate any of the pertinent comments that we've made to staff as far as, you know, hours or whatever. That make sense? No, no.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Biassadi is the second. I'd like to mention that I had a discussion with staff about the video recording and suggested staff incorporate some thinking about how to review whether the recording is actually working or not. We've had several applications in the last couple of months that have video surveillance, but the idea of checking to see if the recording is actually happening so it can be used has been up in the question. So with that, I'd like to call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's a 10-day appeal period. Aside from that, you're ready to go. Thank you. Moving on to application, excuse me, Agenda Item 5E 890 El Camino Real, a request for a conditional use permit and architectural review permit to allow the expansion of an existing skilled nursing facility per chapters 1296, 110C, and 12108, 10 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report please.
Thank you. As stated, the applicant is proposing an expansion to the existing skilled nursing facility. It's located at the corner of El Camino Real in Euclid, and those are narrow blocks at that location, so it's also bounded by Hensley on the other side. The site is approximately 30,400 square feet. The existing building is 900, I'm sorry, 9,908 square feet, and was built in 1962. There's been very few changes to the building since that time. To talk a little bit about the services that they do provide there, since this type of use is not before us very often, in fact, I'm not sure if, and anytime since 1962, we've seen an application like this. They provide nursing care, and they provide physical, occupational, and speech therapy. So we did have a discussion with them early on about, is it a hospital? Because their name includes that word "hospital." But based on the services that they provide, they are not a hospital as defined in many various government codes and sections, as well as our municipal code. Their current capacity is 45 people. The application before you, they proposed to expand to be able to care for 51 people. So they're proposing an expansion of 3,490 square feet. It's proposed near the corner of Euclid and Hensley. And I will ask the applicant to explain a little bit about some of the unique restrictions that are on these types of facilities, and how that impacts where an addition can be placed, and what kind of changes can be made to a building. So I'll ask the applicant to do that, as he's more of an expert in that area. But it does influence how the design has been laid out, as well as the site. So the addition includes capacity for six new beds, as I've mentioned, a physical therapy room, offices, conference room, and a new nurses' station. So the application is really about keeping up to date with the needs of the people that they are serving, as well as doing a small increase in capacity. The design of the addition is intended to blend in with the existing building, which is somewhat plain or nondescript in its architectural style, but then also to provide a transition to the adjacent residential neighborhood. So as such, it's designed as a one-story stucco building, with the tallest point being 17 feet 6 inches, which is similar to the height of some of the houses that are one-story, split-level, and two-story in the adjacent neighborhood. They're proposing aluminum windows that do have some architectural detail in the size and proportion of those windows. And those windows are also recessed quite deeply in most cases, so that does provide some light and shadow in a building that otherwise is somewhat simple in its architectural appearance. They've included some decorative lighting as well. With the project, they would change the parking lot configuration somewhat. They would close the curb cut, which is on Euclid Avenue. It is substandard today and not well-used in staff's observation. They would propose a new curb cut on Hensley that would be compliant with today's code. They would also have, they would actually reduce the number of parking spaces, but they are proposing 18 fully-compliant spaces. The spaces that have been out there in the drive aisles are not fully compliant with the code today. And it would include new landscaping around the addition, which has quite a bit of architectural interest. And in the rendering that you've received, it does reflect the plant choices and kind of the color and scale of that landscaping. The Architectural Review Committee reviewed the project on June 16th. Staff had made minor recommendations. Those have been implemented in the plans that you have in front of you, in large part, so we'll just go over those briefly. We recommended a new sign at the entrance on the south elevation, because it's kind of a new main entrance to the building. They have included that on the revised plans. We asked them to explore the possibility of a monument sign towards the corner, because people will be coming around the corner, and will need to know that this is the place to turn in. They have included that on the plans, as well as landscaping that will emphasize the new front entrance. They've agreed to repaint the entire existing building as well. There was some discussion at Architectural Review about lighting and about some green building measures. The applicant has requested that we defer those two items to the time of building permits submittal. Staff does feel comfortable with that, because those are items that would normally be considered at the time of construction detail. And so what we've asked them to do is to create a lighting plan, a photometric plan, that will show the parking lot and exactly where the lights will, how big they will light the parking lot. We want to ensure that the parking lot is safe, but also not overlight the project, since there are residential houses directly across the street. So staff would be reviewing that at the time of building permits submittal. We also had a request that they consider the possibility of installing solar panels on the site. There are some limitations, construction limitations, on installing them on the existing building. So they request to consider them on the new building. So staff will be asking the applicant to prepare some materials and to submit those to us at the time of building permit submittal, to explain why or why not solar panels may be feasible at that location. So that takes care of the Architectural Review Committee recommendations. It was an overall favorable recommendation forward to the Full Planning Commission. Staff sent a courtesy notice to adjacent neighbors on May 23rd, as well as a legal notice on July 8th. We did receive one phone call from a property owner just today, and he reported to staff that sometimes he does notice that employees park on the street instead of always in the parking lot. So staff would like to add a condition of approval tonight, a new condition number 19, requiring that employees park in the parking lot and not in the public street. And since this business operates at multiple hours of the day, and they have a range of the kinds of professionals that work there, and perhaps some of those employees may turn over more frequently, some of the aides and assistants, we would like to add to that condition that they make it a requirement as part of their new employee training. So whatever packet they give to new employees, we would like there to be a statement in there that employees should park in the parking lot instead of on the public street, to anticipate the fact that this use could be there for quite some time, and we don't want to create any problems over the years. Staff would also like to point out a unique aspect of this project as a skilled nursing facility. It is like a hospital in that it is not subject to our local building code authority. So medical buildings are subject to a state authority for building code, and that is the Office of Statewide Health Planning and Development, OSHPOD. So we've heard of it, but we haven't frequently seen it implemented in our projects. So what that means is that OSHPOD will do the plan check, the building inspections, and the certificate of occupancy, not our own building division. So this is unique for us, because as you well know, our conditions of approval are normally tied to the building permit and to the final inspection of the building permit and the certificate of occupancy. So considering that, we do have several unique conditions related to this project. So I would like to go over those, since those are different than what we're used to seeing. So conditions of approval are on page 7. And starting with condition number 3, this is quite unique. We are requesting that the applicant make a deposit of $5,000 to the Community Development Department to ensure that all conditions of approval are met. The Use Permit and Architectural Review Permit would not be valid until this deposit is made. Once the project is complete and all the conditions are met, the Community Development Department would refund this deposit in full to the applicant. So this is insurance, if you would, to make sure that they comply with all the conditions of approval. Number 4, this is somewhat obvious, but a new condition for us, considering this kind of project, they must comply with all OSHPOD requirements. Condition number 6, they still must secure a building permit for the work that is not covered by OSHPOD review. So staff has been in contact with the OSHPOD staff, and as we understand it, OSHPOD will review all elements of the actual building footprint, things that are attached to the building that are used for medical purposes. Other aspects of the site still fall into our purview and review. So they would need to get a building permit that covers those things. So that, as we understand it, would include the trash enclosure, the ADA parking, the monument sign, and anything else that may come up along the way.
That would be just for information, water, wastewater, and sewer hookups, or water sewer and... Let's see, what was the other one?
Yes.
Storm, yeah.
So they're still required to get an encroachment permit. They're still required to analyze their water and sewer service. And they're still required to do any upgrade that may be required for the expansion of the use. So yes, thank you.
And we'd be checking on their, the water supply being sufficient for fire code. Well, not our fire code, but wouldn't there be some check?
Yes, there is some overlap, and staff has started that conversation with OSHPOD, but we will continue it between planning, engineering, building, and their staff to make sure that the utilities line up. This does seem like something that needs further discussion as we go through the project.
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
No problem. We're expecting them to do kind of a concurrent review, and that's the way we've listed the conditions of approval. I do understand that the OSHPOD review can be quite a bit longer than ours, so we've tried to structure the conditions, knowing that that's going to drive the timeline and not our review process. The other thing I wanted to note is that condition number 7, as you know, we always have a pre-construction meeting for commercial and residential projects. What we've requested that they do is, once they've gotten through their OSHPOD plan check review, to then come back and schedule a meeting with us, look at the plans that are approved by OSHPOD, and make sure that everything is lining up. So the building permit required from us, the building permit required from OSHPOD, the conditions of approval from the Planning Commission, all of those things need to come together. We'd like that time of the pre-construction meeting to be the check. So in conclusion, after all of that, staff does recommend approval of the project. We find that the project would provide a needed service in this community. Demographically, the needs of these kinds of services are increasing in our city and everywhere, because of demographic shifts. The project is designed to transition into the adjacent residential neighborhood and is considerate of those residential neighbors. It does meet the parking requirements of the municipal code, increases the appearance of the rear parking lot and the landscaping adjacent to the residential neighbors. So we recommend approval, based on findings of fact 1 through 10, and the conditions of approval 1 through 18 in the staff report, with the addition of the new condition 19 that I discussed about employees parking on-site and including that information in training materials. So I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any commission questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson?
On, regarding the OSHPOD regulations, was that driven because it's a hospital?
Yes, as I understand, their requirements apply to hospitals and skilled nursing facilities.
So there would not be any impact of boarding care homes?
No, boarding care homes that are in residential houses are under separate regulations, and we review those.
Department of Social Service, community care licensing, yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Through the chair. We had one item in Architectural Review that I don't seem mentioned here, and that's, we had asked the applicant to repair and paint the fence and clean up the landscaping a little bit along El Camino. Has that been addressed at all? Or is that included in, like, painting the building comment?
It is not addressed, and it should be. So thank you for pointing that out. At Architectural Review, we did discuss repairing the fence. It is a residential-style wood fence. I think would be a good way to describe it. It could stand for a little bit of repair. The landscaping, I've included a condition of approval in regards to landscaping maintenance. So we would expect to see a higher level of maintenance in the future than what we've seen there in the past for landscaping, including that area and the public right-of-way between the sidewalk and the property line.
Right, because it's on El Camino. It is very visible.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase?
I think I said in that ARC review meeting as well, if memory serves me right, and maybe I'm wrong, but I thought that the applicant told us then that the fence and whatever, the signage in the front was not in their purview, you know. Am I mistaken on that? I thought we had that discussion, and maybe I'm thinking of something different, but I thought...
We had two related discussions at Architectural Review. So there's limitations about making changes to the physical building, so the applicant can address that in his presentation. In regards to the fence, we did talk about making some changes to the fence. And as I recall the discussion, the applicant rightly pointed out, in their initial submittal to us, they had a dramatic change to the fence and to the landscaping. And in working through the design, staff did not ultimately recommend that approach to the fence for a variety of reasons. But we did talk about changes along the way. This project has been in development for quite some time.
Right. There was something about it wasn't connecting or something with the fence in the building, but I guess when the applicant gets up there, he'll make it all clear.
Any other questions? Ladies, thank you very much for the staff report. Now I'd like to ask the applicant, open the public hearing and ask the applicant to step forward. Give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Steve Keiki. I'm the architect with MSW A&amp;E Services. The address is 3551 Pegasus Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Thank you, commission, for hosting us tonight and hearing my project. I've gone through the staff report and want to thank Laura also for the hard work she's done over the course of this project. And we have no exceptions to the staff report. And I'll just take this opportunity to clarify a couple of things. Commissioner Chase, I think one of the issues was the fence, which actually there is an item in, one of the conditions dealt with graffiti, and I think that was what was actually mentioned. There was one little bit of graffiti on the north face along Euclid on the fence. Otherwise, the fence is not in terrible repair, but it does occasionally get a little bit of graffiti. One of the reasons we didn't do the dramatic change to the front was because the hedge is, I don't know, chest-high, and the fence is not much higher than that. And really, the landscaping is what keeps the fence from getting graffitied more. Because our dramatic change in design had a lot more graffiti surface, and I think that was, again, the condition that did turn up in the staff report, address graffiti, but I think it was mainly about fence maintenance as well. One of the other issues that was mentioned was the delicacy of adding an addition to a building that was built in 1962 and has to meet OSHPOD requirements. Obviously, the seismic and wind and all kinds of regulations have changed since 1962. So the problem we face today is if we were to do anything to that building built in 1962 or to any degree, it would all have to be brought up to current code. There's really not much of a way to do that except to scrape it and start over. So the only way we make this project work is to completely structurally stand off of the existing building with our new building. So there'll be a two- or three- or four-inch seismic separation, whatever the structural engineer determines. So the corridors and the circulation system will connect. It'll work like one building, but from a structural and physical and building apartment view, it will be two separate buildings. So that was also part of the question with the solar panels. When we looked at putting solar panels on there, obviously, the, we can't really load anything on the existing roof, so we're limited to the new roof for any potential solar applications. And while I'm on that subject, I will address where I'm at with that at this point as well. I've talked to several different solar companies about the panel situation on that roof. And the one thing, the one hiccup or uncertainty at this point is any facility like this, we have emergency power. So when, you know, the big storm hits and the power goes out like that, our type of facility, the power has to come on just like that as well. So that's the issue right now with the solar panels, is how we interface a solar panel use with a building that is completely dependent on emergency power at times, and how we do the switching over and the segregating so that we don't end up with a situation where the solar's functioning and feeding and when we, you know, switch to emergency power. They aren't just, they're not really certain of that yet. So we're doing the homework, and we'll submit the study prior to getting a building permit. Outside of that, I don't know that there are any other questions.
Very good.
Issues, if anyone has a question.
Any commission questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Through the chair. Yes, just basically, the painting, if you can just clarify a bit more on, I see the new building, it looks very nice. And thank you for submitting the renderings. The existing building, will that be freshened up and...
Yeah, it will be done up to blend in with the existing, or the new. So it will be completely repainted and all that, accents will be repainted. So there'll be, you know, a little bit of accent color on the coping at the top of the wall and some things like that, so.
And also, in the staff report, they mentioned a sign on the corner. Is that something that you're going to be...
Yeah, the design of the building, as it stands now, the building kind of tucks in at the corner, so there's really a good opportunity, and I thank staff for recommending it, to put a monument sign on that corner that will kind of sit at a 45, so it can be seen from just about every direction. And we have room for it. So we're, you know, we'll certainly participate in the design of that sign and making sure that it's architecturally compatible with the other things we're doing.
Well, it'll be great to see the finished project because it's certainly, you know, as time goes on, freshness is good. And thank you for submitting these good reports.
Any other questions for the applicant? I'd like, I have a couple items. One, my understanding is that facility has an outstandingly positive record, and I wondered, as the architect, did you get into the business aspects at all?
Um, not in this particular facility, but I'm doing nine other different projects for the same ownership group, and they own, I don't know, seven or eight in the Bay Area, most of them in the East Bay. They own several in Southern California and developing some new ones. We're currently in the planning loop in Fremont with a four-story, 62-bed, very high-end facility of the same nature. I wish you were the planning commission in Fremont. But if you, you can go online and you can rate these facilities, and it's, I was surprised to go through and see that, fortunately for me, my client has very good ratings in every community. And in fact, typically, the only good ratings. I mean, almost all of them, it's on the various different websites that rate these places, and that one is a state-run website, so they just relate their infractions and their write-ups for this and that and things like that. Others are user-oriented websites where it's families and people that are, you know, commenting. So it is very refreshing to see a group that, because so many of these, I mean, the majority of them, it's mostly negative comments and report cards.
I was very happy to see that, and because of that, it's great that it's going to be freshened up.
Yeah.
My other question is about the structure of the existing. Do you have any reason to believe that it's in good enough condition to weather an earthquake at all?
We actually have a summary and review done by a structural engineer. I think it dates to '09. And, you know, I don't remember the exact wording of that. I would say, just based on what I know about simple wood frame structures, that you have pretty good sections of solid wall, and then, you know, the windows are kind of large, but they aren't extra-large. And the ratio of wall to window, there's a lot more wall than there is window. So being a simple wood frame structure, I would say that that's probably going to, in one story, that's going to be pretty sound in an earthquake. That's not to say, built in '62, it probably didn't have all the hole downs, all the hardware, all the tie-ins from the wall to the roof structure that... And that's really where it's just substandard. And there's just no way to really calculate it, you know, for what was done, you know, what sits there today. I'm sure the engineer that designed it then calculated, maybe that would be the way to do it, to go back and review their calculations, but... At any rate, I'd have to revisit that structural review we have, and we'll submit that, obviously, or can submit that to the city for their review as well.
That's a fair answer, under the conditions. What I would like to recommend to you, and I, this is, I'm not recommending this as a condition, but as a practical matter, I'm sure you would be able to do termite work without opening it up to a review by OSHPOD.
Yeah.
And I'd like to recommend that very heartily to you, simply because, number one, it's highly likely that there are some issues there. And whatever issues you find, when you do that remedial work, it'll make the structure that much better able to stand in earthquake. Because I agree with you, as, from my structural knowledge, single-family or single-story buildings, wood frame, do a good job of standing up to it. The other observation I have would apply both to the existing and the new, and that is, since you're going to, and this is an energy, potential energy savings, I suspect, you could do it two ways. You could do it with regular glass and coating, or you could do it with energy, the new energy glass that reduces the transmission of heat and ultraviolet light. I suspect that it would both save you energy by reducing the heat load on that building and also make it easier on your staff and patients. Because anytime people are in the rays of the sun, they can get pretty warm. Then you'd either have to keep the, you know, windows closed or blinds or something like that. So I'm just, this is just a recommendation, that you look into glass that resists energy transmission one way or another, simply because it can so dramatically affect your energy cost and make it more comfortable. That's about all I have. I think it's a great project. I think it's something the community needs, as well as your business owners, so it looks great. Any other commission questions? Okay, the chair's open for a motion.
Through the chair.
Oh, wait. First, I have to close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission. Excuse me. Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
If there is no further discussion, I'm happy to make a motion. The planning commission approved use permit 10-005 and architectural review permit 10-003 based on the findings of facts 1 through 10 and subjects of condition of approval 1 through 18. Were there any additions?
19.
19, that's right. 19. And that condition was?
That was the...
The parking, oh, for the employee parking.
And there was also a mention of a fence repair, but I think that's been addressed, so I think it's just a parking. Okay, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Is there a second?
There is.
Commissioner Chase, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and there's a 10-day appeal period. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number six, it's discussion, 6A city staff discussion.
All right, volunteers for the August 11th meeting, Architectural Review, Mr. Viasadi. Anyone else?
Probably.
Okay, Commissioner Chase?
Not sure if I can be on vacation.
Commissioner Peter, Peterson. Perfect. And Commissioner Chase, I'll check with Marshall and with Mishra, just in case they want to.
Do you, excuse me, do you know what's going to be on the Arch Review meeting?
Offhand, I don't, could we screen that? Don't know, we could email everyone and give it to them.
No new Glenview items yet?
None on this, none on this one.
Okay. Thank you.
But I do have a Glenview, I was going to go on to, I actually have a second. I'm going to give everyone a Glenview update to say where we're at within the construction. As you know, there were 38 homes that were destroyed as part of this. We've now issued permits for four of those homes for the complete rebuild. If you haven't driven by that area in a while, it's within the last month really gone from a disaster area to construction area. So I'd suggest that you just drive through there. The homes are building quickly. The contractors we have on these jobs are above average. I mean, they're really good contractors that have been hired here, and they're building quickly for their clients, so that's great to see. So there's four that's been issued. I think there'll be about another two issued over about the next week or so, so we'll be up to six. And by the end of summer, I would say, we'll probably be up to about 10 or 12 homes that are under construction. There's a total of 24 homeowners right now that are either under construction or in some stage of design or about to hire an architect. Several other homeowners have already sold their homes to PG&E or will, or are in the process of negotiating with PG&E for their home sale. So it's good to see this neighborhood is starting to rebuild, and I'd suggest going through the neighborhood. Seventeen homes that were damaged to the point that they no longer could be occupied, they were referred to as the homes that were yellow-tagged by our building division immediately after the fire. Four of those homes have now been repaired to the point that people are living inside them, and all but, I believe, three of them are under construction. And those ones that haven't been under construction and I think are in the negotiating process with PG&E, to sell to PG&E, and then hopefully PG&E will go in there quickly and make the repairs and get those homes occupied once again.
What is PG&E's plan for the other homes that they bought?
That's something that they're going to still have to propose to us. They haven't come to us with a formal proposal right now. And, you know, then that's something that we're going to have to take to the neighborhood to see what's in the neighborhood's vision, whether or not, you know, it could range from anything to selling the homes to individual homeowners, to rebuild homes, to build homes there, to selling them to a single developer. But that's something we'd really want to hear from the neighborhood, from, you know, what their vision is for the neighborhood and for these lots that are sold to PG&E.
Is that something you do in a meeting context?
Exactly, yeah.
I would highly recommend that, simply because, and I have to admit, about most of the information I get is from the press. The press is so dramatically critical of PG&E. If the city doesn't take the initiative, I don't see it coming from them.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, this is something that's going to be driven by the residents and something that's going to be led by the city. So, yeah, I agree completely. One thing I forgot to mention, too, is on the 27th, and about a week from now, we'll be having a neighborhood infrastructure meeting for the neighbors. So that's something that's going to be held for the neighbors to say, you know, where we're at in terms of rebuilding the roads, rebuilding the sidewalks, and rebuilding the sewer water and stormwater systems.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase.
Where would that meeting be held at?
You know, offhand, I think it's actually going to be held right here at the senior center, but I have to double-check, double-check on that. But I believe it is going to be held here. Lisa could probably check right here on her phone, so.
The, uh... Let's see, what was I thinking there? Oh. I don't really have any comparison to make, but it seems to me this is a really quick schedule for recovery of that area. If I imagine some other area in another city, Philadelphia or LA or something, then the area could stay there, burnt down for three years, and nothing happened. Do you have any comparisons?
No, not really. I mean, I've been actually, I mean, I think it's, number one, I think the residents there have shown a lot of resolve to want to rebuild and want to rebuild quickly, and they've been the driver. You know, the planning commission and the city council has made the right decisions in terms of creating an expedited permit process, expedited planning process to facilitate that. But it really has been the neighbors there saying, hey, we want to rebuild. We want to go back into the neighborhood. So maybe that's not there, you know, that's happened in other cities, but here, it has happened for another number of the neighbors.
I think it's, I think it reflects very favorably on the city staff, the council, and other parties that have participated in enabling this process because it could take a long time if it were standard review periods and so on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, unless there's some more city staff discussion.
That's it.
Okay, 6B planning commission discussion.
Just real quickly.
Commissioner Chase.
Like to compliment staff, you know, the reports are great. Even long, long ones are great. So good job.
Thank you.
Any other comments? And I agree with Commissioner Chase, I'm sure the commission does. My experience over a number of years has been that staff reports have been improving consistently with time, but in the past five years or so, they've been really quite excellent. And I think your initiation to come up with standard conditions that you can use and select rather than reinvent the wheel within every application, I think it goes a long way towards that.
Actually, I have one.
Commissioner Viasadi.
Through the chair. We didn't mention that Tony's back.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Tony Rozzi is back. He's not here tonight because he didn't have any items, but he's been hired primarily to concentrate on the Glenview rebuild. He had been working for the Alameda County Redevelopment Agency, but, you know, he has ties to San Bruno, and he came here and helped us in the days after the fire, and he wanted to come back and help us with the Glenview fireworks. So he'll be here throughout the rebuild process, helping us out with those applications, as well as some general planning stuff.
Thank you very much.
I have one last item.
Commissioner Johnson.
It is also, this might have been mentioned in the past, but Commissioner Peterson presented on behalf of the planning commissioner a report to the city council and did a very fine job, and we're technology for that.
Thank you.
And presented well, and through the planning department, it was just a very succinct report. It was thorough and very clear and a very professional presentation, so.
Thank you very much. I have to return the compliments to staff. They prepared the slides for me, and I delivered them, but their basis, foundation basis was excellent. Any other items? Okay, that's, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.